Okay, you ready otherwise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you Troy, well good afternoon everybody. Thank you so much for being with us here today. Before we call the meeting to order, we're always honored and pleased to have Pastor Jason Vandavere provide our invocation. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon. Lord, we are grateful. We just come with gratitude for you and all that you've done. Lord, truly, all blessings flow from you and in you we live and move and have our being. And so, Lord, we pray that you would just work here today. Lord, that you would work in the servants of this county, Lord, in the people that they serve, Lord, that you would draw many in these days in which we live to yourself. Lord, that your peace and your blessing would be upon not just this time, this meeting, but, Lord, on all people. Lord, we pray for wisdom, we pray for direction, we pray for clarity and guidance. We love you, Lord, and we thank you. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for that Pastor. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, Board of County Commissioners. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office has reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great, thank you, sir. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, and I have none either. And our best to Commissioner Teal, he does have an excused absence today. With that, we're going to move right into item two. We have a couple of very special ceremonies and proclamations, and we're really thankful to have some really amazing guests with us here today. We're going to begin with a recognition of retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel Mark Maloney, and we have Dan Dirz, our Open Space and Natural Resource Director, presenting for staff. Hi, Dan.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate retired Lieutenant Colonel Mark Maloney, U.S. Army, today, and his contribution to Douglas County. We gather not just to recognize a place on the trail, but to honor the heart and spirit of a veteran who dedicated his life to service. Mark served his nation with distinction during the Vietnam War. When he returned home and transitioned out of uniform, he carried with him a commitment to those who served alongside him, especially those who were no longer with us. That commitment led him to work with our open space team to place a bench on an amazing overlook at Lincoln Mountain Open Space. A place where he felt the warriors, he could no longer climb those trails or stand on that ridge, might still, in spirit, share the sweeping view he loved so much. For years, he ran and biked those trails. He lived in motion, returning again and again to that spot. And then, in an instant, life changed. A devastating accident left him with a spinal cord injury. The trail that once had been part of his daily rhythm suddenly became a place he could no longer reach. The bench he once dedicated to others became a symbol of hope, memory, and resilience for him as well. And thanks to the incredible efforts of Luke Five Adventures and the Douglas County Open Space Team, he was able to return to the tribute bench and the view he once thought he'd never see again. Carried with care, surrounded by community, lifted by the spirit of service he always embodied. Today, we honor his and all veterans' service resilience and unwavering commitment to others. We honor the idea that even the smallest acts of remembrance, like placing a bench on a hillside, can echo through a lifetime, touching others in ways we can never predict. It's my privilege to welcome retired Lieutenant Colonel Mark Maloney, whose life continues to remind us of what service, gratitude, and courage truly look like.
Welcome, sir. Lieutenant, would you like to say a few words?
Well, the bench has a very special meaning. I'm about ready. One week I turned 90. And I don't know whether it happened at the time of my accident, but it hit the emotional cord somewhere in my body. So if I have to stop from time to time, I'm glad this didn't happen while I was in command. But anyway, the bench has a very special meaning for me and my family. We've... It's so bad that one of my grandsons named his dog after Lincoln. But yeah, it was a crazy situation for me because I survived one year in Vietnam in sometimes precarious situations. And then I came home, the year before my accident, I ran about 4,000 miles on my bike, which I truly loved. And something happened. I guess as you get older, you have to be pretty careful about your reflexes and what can happen. I was in my mid-80s at the time. Anyway, I was riding along on my road bike, and my eyes closed. And I fell off the bike, tried to relocate some rocks with my face, broke my neck in the process. Currently have 16 screws in it. I will tell you one story which actually has been on ABC. It's pretty much remarkable save, the reason I'm here. Shortly after my accident, or where I fell off my bike, another individual came along. He saw what happened. He got off his bike. He came over and knew what to do and what not to do because you don't want to fool around with someone with a broken neck. And they eventually, it could get a fire engine down there. They finally got an ambulance. And the ambulance, as he was leaving, his name was Chris, he got back on his bike. First time going from his home to his duty station at Fort Carson. And if you can believe this... He was in the command of a medical company. Doesn't get better than that. So since then, we've become very good friends. We celebrate the save every year. And it was a good save. The other things I'd say, I love the trails. And I live right on the borderline of El Paso County and Douglas. And I spent 20-some years running, riding the trails. And I will tell you this, you can be very proud of the people who do and run the trail, take care of the trails. My favorite trails, if you're familiar with Eddie O'Leary Woods, Lincoln Mountain, Spruce Mountain. And I spent a lot of time from the start of the Philip S. Ball at Miller Park, which is a fantastic place. I hope you all have been able to go there. And so I've enjoyed the benefits of Douglas County, the Parks and Recreation Committee. And so, anyway, the bench has been put up. And I asked them about several months ago if it would be possible to put up a plaque with my story, my life story, how the bench came to me. And they worked on that, and apparently it's done now. And it's nice for me to know at the age of 90 that family who... I have a large family. I have two daughters. My Melinda here is my best caregiver. Couldn't ask for anymore. She's had two boys, two girls. They're all getting married now or engaged. And I think that the... Hopefully, the bench will stay around after I'm gone, and people read the story, it might mean something. I'm also going to leave here three stories, short stories I've written, which hopefully some people may read, take to heart. I've also, because I can't use my hands, I'm what is called a C3 incomplete, which means, you know, if it's complete, it means you can't get, you're going to be in bed. Incomplete means maybe you can get out. Well, when it started out at Memorial Maine and then moved to the VA Hospital, I couldn't get out of bed. I didn't think I was ever going to taste food again. And because C3, it's only C2 and C1 can get worse than what I was. But the VA is an amazing, amazing operation. I hope it stays because the VA takes care of veterans, and they do a fantastic job. So five and a half years ago, I was in bed, not knowing what's going to happen with the rest of my life. I still cannot use my hands very much. I exercise every day. So that's five and a half years times 365 exercises. Here's the best advice I can give you. Don't mess with a spinal cord. Boy, it could really go shit. Anyway, I have what they call a joystick, and I can use it. But that's about it. I have to have caregivers, morning and evening, and they feed me, dress me, get me into bed. But here's a good deal. I was a competitive runner. I did, if you're familiar with the ascent of Pike's Peak, I ran that when I was 75, and I won in my age group by 30 minutes. So I love to run, I love to brag about it, I'm sorry. And... But so I had a very active life. I started running competitively when I was 55, and I ran the Boulder Boulder, if you're familiar with that. It's a great race. Guess what? In Boulder. And so, two years ago, I had made enough progress that I was able to walk into the Folsom Stadium at Boulder last come I... It was so neat because they had my life story on the scoreboard. And it was Memorial Day, so a whole lot of people clapped. So that was kind of nice. I mean, it was kind of a nice day for me. I'm hoping to go back next Memorial Day. I have a new walker. Last week, I walked the longest distance I ever walked, which was one mile with a walker. And I walked at a fast pace. So for someone who didn't think he was going to get out of bed, it's kind of cool, too. And I've written articles about some of the things I've done. I'm in a co-pilot program at the VA Hospital where I go in, try to tell other guys, hey, there's hope ahead, you know, and all that. So I don't want to talk too long here because I'm not sure how this works. So anyway, that's my story. And I'm glad that the plaque has been approved and will be placed up there. I have one more thing. Since you gave me this, I have something for you. Melinda?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Yeah. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Sure, well Lieutenant, thank you. Did you have one other thing that you wanted to say, or are you...
Oh, I could probably go on for quite a while.
I just wanted to give you the picture of the bench with the sunset.
Well, thank you. That is wonderful. Thank you so much for that Lieutenant. I'm going to open it up to the board for any comments. Commissioner?
Oh, just...
We have one more thing. You can either pass around or read, whatever. But I have read three articles. They're short, they're like a page or something, but yeah, go ahead. You don't have to read them now.
We will take a look right now Lieutenant, thank you. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Well, I just want to thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of our community. The whole idea behind the Heroes Hall of Fame, or Douglas County Hall of Fame, is to honor our heroes, to tell the stories, and to enshrine forever that legacy for future generations. So we are beyond honored to have you here today, and even more so to have you as one of our first inductees. This is our first year of doing it in the Douglas County Hall of Fame. And your lasting impact in our community, it's hard to put into words, but we do appreciate you and want the entire community and the whole county to pay you respect. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you Commissioner. And I will just echo that. I think first and foremost, sir, thank you for your service. And Dan Dirz, thank you for your service to our U.S. military. And ma'am, you didn't introduce yourself, but I want to thank you as well because the care that you provide, those that provide care to those in need are really significant to the county. So thank you for everything that you do. What's your name?
Melinda.
Melinda, thank you Melinda. We appreciate you too. I was just going to add, I was taking a quick gander at what you provided us, sir. And you quote in one of your notes, you said, "Aging, I realized, didn't mean surrendering the activities that brought me joy, it meant finding new ways to embrace them." And it's really remarkable for me. I turn 50 next year, and I was just lamenting with Sheri, you know, I don't think we ever... I'm not too concerned about it because we know a lot of people that haven't made it this far. I've known 14-year-olds where it ended, right there. And so you celebrating 90 is exciting, and I think the lesson that I take away, and maybe others do, is that you do exactly what it says on that bench. You rest, you enjoy, and you appreciate. But that second line doesn't apply to you because you did make it up there. So sir, we just, we are so thankful for you, for your service to open space and the entire team. I love seeing all of the staff and the volunteers. If you don't know about our volunteers with open space, oh my goodness. I mean, it's like, it used to be 160, now it's, I think it's close to 200. How many are open space volunteers?
228, sir.
Keeps growing, keeps growing. That's why it's so nice out there. Please do rest and enjoy our open space. But sir, we do appreciate... Let's give another big round of applause to Lieutenant Mark Maloney. Yeah, and with that, we'd like to come down and present you with an induction into our Hall of Fame, and then also one of our challenge coins, if that's okay.
You're being inducted into the Hall of Fame, Douglas County Hall of Fame, first person.
Hi.
We have a challenge coin here with our core priorities on it there for you.
Thank you.
And just a little certificate, but just to recognize you. Recognize your induction into the Hall of Fame.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You're inspiring to me, I like this. I don't feel so bad about turning 50 next year.
Yeah, oh yeah. Where's Dan, where's Dan go? Oh.
Sneak.
Yeah, please do, please do, yeah.
Would you like to be a follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh my goodness.
Should I put this here, too?
You can move the iPad.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
God bless you, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful.
Sorry, there you go.
You can take the... Well, you have to give that back to him. But we have a picture of him. Yeah.
That's great. Sometimes in the midst of all the things that are going on, just take a moment to rest, enjoy, and appreciate. I think that's a really good lesson for all of us. So with that, we're going to move on to our second item, also really pretty exciting for all of us, and particularly our largest unincorporated area in Douglas County. Item B is Highlands Ranch Metro District 2025 J. Evan Golding District of the Year Award. And we have Commissioner Kevin Van Winkle presenting. Kevin?
Yeah, and this actually, this is a very special place in my heart, being a Highlands Ranch citizen for the vast majority of my life. And also, really being, I got the opportunity to work with Evan Golding at the Capitol for many years. And the man had just the hardest goal, the hardest service for the people of Colorado, and for our special districts. And I can't imagine any district more special than Highlands Ranch. I think my very first, or one of my first bills at the Capitol, I wrote it for any metro district with over 95,000 people. And people, of course, saw that very quickly of, there's not that many metro districts in the world, or the United States of America with that many people. But Highlands Ranch, we have a very unique form of governance, a very, something that we, the citizens, are very much appreciate it. And it really comes down to the heart of service that comes from our metro district. So altogether, fitting and wonderful that our Highlands Ranch Metro District was the recipient of this award. It is the 2025 J. Evan Golding District of the Year Award. And the award is presented annually to the special district, during the Special District Association, their annual conference in Keystone. The award honors visionary planning, exceptional service, and exemplary commitment to community engagement, and is awarded to one of the 2,700-member districts each year. So there's only one. Founded in 1981, the Highlands Ranch Metro District has prioritized sustainable growth, diligent infrastructure development, and comprehensive municipal services since its inception. Under the stewardship of the seven-member elected board and the expertise of General Manager Stephanie Stanley, the metro district delivers a wide array of community essentials. The metro district operates with no debt, having paid off its debt years ago, which my property taxes. Thank you for that stewardship. Highlands Ranch Metro District serves more than 103,000 residents across 22,000 acres. Over the last four decades, service has included street infrastructure, construction, landscape, and corridor management, and ownership of a vast network of parks, trails, open space, stormwater facilities, and not to mention, of course, or forget, the massive miles of fencing that the metro district is doing a very good job of right now of replacing. Along with diverse youth and adult recreation programs and activities, the Highlands Ranch Mansion, the Highlands Ranch Senior Center, which is having an amazing first year, and so much more. But today, we are joined by General Manager Stephanie Stanley and the Chair of the Board, Renee Anderson. So we want to honor you and recognize your service to our community.
And if you'd like to approach and share your comments for the record, we would welcome that.
Thanks so much. Renee Anderson, I serve as the Board Chair for Highlands Ranch Metro District, and I'm here with Stephanie Stanley, our awesome general manager who keeps it all together and makes it work smoothly. So you know, the metro district is honored to be recognized for its four decades of achievements in building and successfully operating the Highlands Ranch community. Highlands Ranch's success is built on the foundation of a well-thought-out and executed plan by many of its founding leaders, which you can imagine is a number over the last 40-some years. Particularly the strong financial planning by a special man named Bruce Lebsack, who is no longer with us. But we are super grateful for his contributions. We also attribute this accomplishment to our invaluable partnerships and project collaborations with fellow government organizations. It takes all of us to make it work well, doesn't it? The metro district continues to deliver a high level of service at a low cost to residents with a commitment by the Board and the staff to maintain these efforts into the future. As we approach our community's 45th anniversary in 2026, we look forward with excitement to see what's next for Highlands Ranch. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Did the manager want to share any comments as well?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Okay, great. Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for those comments. I'll open it up to the board for any additional comments.
No, let's make sure, Highlands Ranch, we weren't able to vote, of course, in the awarding of this award, but we were able to recognize it. And that's what we wanted to do today for the whole community of Douglas County, just take a moment out, pause, and say thank you to many of the local leaders that make Douglas County great. So thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Well, and I would echo that, you know, many, many years ago, I can't believe it's been like 20 years, since I first, you know, we were looking for homes, fifth-generation Coloradan, drove all over, all over the place, thinking, where did we want to maybe have kids and start a family? And we hit that intersection, which is both, it's University in Colorado or Highlands Ranch Parkway in Lincoln. They're the same place.
Depending.
Depending on your orientation there, which is an inside joke for us Highlands Ranchers. But that's where we just said, wow, this is the most clean, beautiful, safe community. What a great place to start. And I know I'm not alone. I think so many thousands of families found themselves in this neck of the woods and said, wow, this is a good place to start. And you've really proved that. Over the last several decades, we have people that, they're not going anywhere. They are aging in place and staying right where they want to be. And now we have a really robust group of seniors that are just continuing to be there. We got to serve a lot of seniors in Highlands Ranch recently. But just want to thank you for your great service. You know, I love to tease you that I would love if you were the best city in Colorado, but we love that you're a metro district and all the work that you do. And I want to pause and recognize my colleague. We, this is new for the county. And Kevin brought with him this desire to recognize the heroes and really identify the good news and the good people in our community. So thank you for that, and you all are definitely part of that. So another big round of applause for the Highlands Ranch Metro District. And similarly, I think we have an induction for you into our Hall of Fame and some challenge coins.
Yeah, so if we could get a picture up front here, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great. Well, really some special ceremonies and proclamations today. With that, we're going to move into item three, which is our consent agenda. I will accept a motion on our consent.
I move to approve all requests in the items A through AH. And item AJ of the consent agenda, AI, has been pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you Commissioner Van Winkle. And in Commissioner Teal's absence, I will second that motion and ask if there's any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously, two to zero. With that, we're going to move into item four, which is our regular agenda for today. And item four A is a 2025 scientific and... Sir, if you could not interrupt the meeting, please. Sir, you're, if you could not interrupt the meeting, please, we appreciate that. Sir, you're out of order. I'm going to ask you to please stay in order. So with that, we're going to move into item four, our regular agenda. Item A is our 2025 Scientific and Cultural Facilities District Tier Three Grant Recognition. We have Kim Smith from Community Services presenting for staff. Hi, Kim.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kim Smith, representing Community Services Staff. Voters approved a one-tenth of one percent sales and use tax for cultural facilities throughout the seven-county Denver metro area in nineteen eighty-eight, and again in twenty sixteen. The one-tenth of one percent sales and use tax equates to one penny for every ten dollars spent. Funds collected as part of the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, or SCFD, are distributed to each of the seven participating counties, including Adams, Arapahoe, Boulder, Broomfield, Genver, Douglas, and Jefferson Counties. Each of the seven counties has a cultural council responsible for recommending allocations for its county's annual portion of sales and use tax to Tier Three organizations. Tier Three recipients are the smaller organizations that provide more personal cultural experiences in our communities. The Board of County Commissioners certified Douglas County's allocation of Tier Three SCFD grant funds on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. The allocation, in the amount of one million two hundred ninety thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cents, was awarded for eleven general operating support and forty-seven project-based grants, for a total of fifty-eight grant awards. All funds distributed benefit Douglas County residents by enlightening and entertaining through visual arts, performing arts, cultural history, natural history, or natural sciences. Organizations that received a grant award were invited here today to be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners. I would like to take a moment to thank the cultural council members for their dedication and commitment to the council, as they spend numerous hours reviewing the grant applications and attending meetings. I would also like to thank SCFD for their support throughout the year. We have representatives from the many organizations that are being recognized today that bring a variety of cultural opportunities to Douglas County residents. I would like to invite any of them to come up and say a few words at this time if they are interested.
Thank you for that. And what I might suggest is when we hand out the checks, that we have them come up and speak, and then they can share whatever comments are on their heart. Does that work for everybody? Thank you for being here with us, we appreciate that. Anybody else from staff have any comments for us? Kim?
No, we do not at this time.
Okay.
I can bring up the letters for distribution.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Kevin, any questions for staff?
No, let's get, let's get to it.
All right, I think we're ready to go. Thank you, okay, great. Well, this is always a lot of fun for us, and historically, what we've done in the past, we have seen some times, and I see our dear friend smiling in the background, there are some really talented organizations that are represented today. We do give out the checks, and sometimes, if you're an artist, a guitar player, if you have an animal, you might bring that and maybe share that with us. We've had, we've been serenaded to many times, and I hope we get a little bit of that today, just to share with the public the amazing things that you bring to our communities. So we welcome your talents and abilities. And with that, we'll begin with a child song. There's a child song here. Welcome, how about a big round of applause? And you don't have to sing if you don't want to. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
I have drums in my, my trunk.
Wonderful, okay, well, great. Do you have any comments for us?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank Douglas County for your support. We offer programming from birth through memory care and assisted living. So when you mentioned that the residents are aging here and loving it, we bring in drum circles weekly to Castle Country, like, not too far from here, and work with memory care and dementia patients that I had them singing Wake Up Little Susie and Switch Out Of Mine a couple of weeks ago. They were like, miss, we don't remember anything, but they sure remembered the lyrics. And then we also work with at-risk and trauma-based youth and teens, and do clinical drum circles for them as part of their treatment program and conditions upon their release. And we show them a way where they can punch and hit things in a productive manner. And we just had a recital with a hundred and ten students, and we had several of them write spoken word about their life, and, yeah, it was amazing. So, thank you so much for supporting your community, and we're happy to be happy, or happy to be part of it, happy to be happy, too.
We're happy you're happy, too. Thank you to a child song, we appreciate that. Yeah, Commissioner?
All right, the Highlands Ranch Cultural Affairs Association.
All right, big round of applause. Welcome. Okay, we know, thank you so much. You know what I would be curious to know, not to put you on the spot, but the number of citizens that you serve on an annual basis, it's a pretty staggering number, right?
There's definitely some repeats, but we're over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand visits.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand visits, huge round of applause, that's hard to believe. Thank you for being here. I have Feel the Beat Corp.
And if you guys come up, if you could stand to the side, we will take a group photo at the end.
Yeah, we'll take a group photo, here you go. Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Hailey, I'm the Program Manager for Feel the Beat, thank you for this recognition. We provide adaptive and inclusive dance programming to individuals with disabilities, as well as those who are deaf, hard of hearing. And I am very proud to be a part of this nonprofit. My partner has a spinal cord injury, and I work with the deaf community. So personally, and within just my vocation, it's a very wonderful organization. And, yeah, we serve both weekly classes and private classes, so if you know anyone who wants to dance and are interested in adaptive classes, please look into us at feelthebeat.dance. Thank you.
Thank you for that lived and experience, too, we appreciate that.
The Highlands Ranch Historical Society.
Welcome.
Thank you, you're welcome. Hi, my name's John Miller, I'm actually brand-new to the society, so I can't take credit for anything that has been done, but what has been done is pretty cool, because they have a website that has a bunch of interviews with people that know about the development of Highlands Ranch, some of the history there. We have monthly meetings, those are all online, too, everything from history to culture. Let's see, what else? Field trips. And then I've gotten involved with our secondary program, where we do a presentation, where we title it "A Forty-Five-Year-Old Community with Sixty-Six Million Years of History", because we've actually found dinosaur fossils right there in Highlands Ranch. So, check out the website, especially if you're interested. Thank you.
Awesome, welcome aboard. So I have the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Alliance. Welcome.
Hi, guys, my name's Emily Davenport, and we are your local wildlife hospital and rehabilitation center. So if you guys find an injured wild animal, whether it's a hummingbird, all the way up to the bobcat, we are the organization that will help you guys out. In addition to our hospital services, we also do all sorts of education through Douglas County. So you may see us around with box turtles and birds of prey, and that would be us. So thank you, guys, so much, thank you to the Commission, and thank you to SCFD.
I remember that, if I see a bobcat in my backyard, that's where I need it, okay.
I have the Performing Arts Academy up next, yes.
You don't need this mic at all, you never do.
My name is Jim Ramsey, I'm the Executive Director for the Performing Arts Academy. We started almost nineteen years ago, in the basement of St. Luke's Baptist Church in Highlands Ranch, and I started with twenty-six kids, and this year, we'll have over eighteen-hundred kids involved in year-round programming. Many are from Highlands Ranch and Douglas County, and we are extremely grateful. We started this partnership with SCFD about five years ago, and this opportunity, this partnership, has allowed us to grow even throughout the pandemic. And so, just, it's a blessing, it's a, it's a true blessing to be able to serve kids. And what I tell our audiences, this week, last week, and the week before, all the time, is that it's not what we do that's different, it's how we do what we do informs why we do it. We're here to build kids from the inside out, we're here to help them become better versions of themselves, and to help them become who they're meant to be through the performing arts. Gentlemen, thank you, on behalf of our staff and our Board, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Do we need to spell out Oklahoma before you go? Okay. Okay, L.A.H.O.M.A., there we go. Very good. So I have Cherokee Ranch and Castle Foundation, big round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So I'm James Holmes, Executive Director of Cherokee Ranch and Castle Foundation, and with me are two members of our leadership management staff, Marilyn Duckett and Donna Smith. And I just want to quickly just say that, you know, Tweet Kimball's vision, who started Cherokee Ranch and Castle Foundation in nineteen ninety-six, I think was so visionary and a person of such great faith, that she decided that the way she wanted to enter into this foundation was with the partnership of Douglas County. And so established the Conservation Isment, which has really protected thirty-four hundred acres of pristine land for the citizens in Douglas County. And so we utilize the castle, in part, as a house museum, because Tweet had an extensive collection of fine art and antiques and objects, and also as a very vibrant event venue to allow the citizens to actually engage with the facility. We did about five hundred and ten events last year, served about twenty thousand people, and the range is science programming, education, we do a lot of hikes, we do a lot of weddings, we do cultural programs of all types, for all the way from kids that are doing princess tea parties, all the way to concerts in the summer. So, we're just here for the community, we really appreciate the support of the Commissioners and our partnership with the county. I wanted to share with you that, with you both, that the CBCA, this is timely, the CBCA just released economic data on the impact of arts and culture in the metro county areas that serve the SCFD. Three point one-two billion dollars, three point one-two billion dollars in economic impact across the district, fourteen point five million engagements, which is more than the Broncos, the Avalanche, and the Rockies, and the Nuggets combined. So the arts and culture is a big part of our community, so thank you for your support of it.
That's awesome, thank you, James. I hope we can do more with Cherokee Ranch and Castle, that's an amazing level of impact.
Yeah, and if you have not been to the Ranch and Castle, I, I highly suggest you go, it's gorgeous. Over twenty thousand residents went last year, and I take every opportunity to go and thank you for your heart of service and making sure it's sticking to the original mission there, so thank you.
We have a castle in Douglas County.
We do, a beautiful castle.
Okay.
That brings us next to the Denver Concert Band, who is very active here in Douglas County.
Hi, I'm Jacinda Bouton, I'm the Music Director of the Denver Concert Band, and the Denver Concert Band has been around for almost sixty years, and the last, I don't know, it's been almost fifteen years, we, our home is Douglas County, we love it here. And we perform at the Lone Tree Arts Center, and it's a band of ninety community players who have regular jobs during the day, and they get together once a week, and we rehearse and we perform. And all over Douglas County, we have a smaller group called the Show and Tell Band that goes out to schools and demonstrates instruments, encourages kids to learn to play instruments. And we have a great scholarship program, where we give a five-thousand-dollar scholarship to a high school senior every year. So it's a, it's a wonderful group of people performing at the Lone Tree Arts Center, and I just want to thank the Douglas County Commission, and SCFD especially, for everything they do, they do for us, because we wouldn't be able to do these great programs without the funding and the help, so thank you.
Thank you. I played alto saxophone in concert band in junior, when they were junior highs, so if you ever need somebody, I'll, we'll be happy to help out. Thank you for being here. I have Colorado Jazz.
Hi, I'm Art Bouton, Founder and Executive Director of Colorado Jazz, operating as the Colorado Jazz Repertory Orchestra. We've been in existence for about thirteen years, performing primarily at the Pace Center in Parker, but also at Cherokee Ranch. This year, we have over forty concerts scheduled throughout the metro area, and plan to serve probably close to twenty thousand patrons, so we thank the Commissioners for their support.
Thank you, congratulations.
With the theme of music on our hearts, the Colorado Wind Ensemble.
I'm Heather Davis, I am the Board President for the Colorado Wind Ensemble. We have been around for forty-three years, and perform at the Pace Center. We also are about to do some outreach with public schools, we will be providing clinicians, we've done this for quite a while, for both Continental League Honor Band and for the Douglas County Middle School Honor Band, coming up in just a couple of weeks. So we're very thankful to have the support from the Commissioners and the SCFD, because we couldn't do this without it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. This is always an exciting moment, I don't know if they're here or not, but when they are here, something tends to fly through that back door. Hawk Quest? I knew it! Oh, yay, look at that. Wow. Good to see you again, sir.
My name is Ken Kidigwa. I've always had a problem with that last name, so I'm going to change that to Smith, or Jones, or something like that. This is my wife Patty, and we love Douglas County. We've been in Douglas County since two thousand, and let me tell you, we couldn't do what we do without you guys, I really appreciate that. We have seen over two million people since we started Hawk Quest, which I think is, yeah, I need to get my head examined, what I did. We have close to thirty to thirty-five birds, and we are already eighty percent book for twenty-six. But the Douglas County is very huge for us, because we do fifth graders, and it's almost in perpetuity, we come back every year, and let me tell you, the teachers just look forward to it, and oftentimes, we get calls before we really know we're going to get the grant, you know? And I said, well, we don't know yet, but I hope we get it, and I want to thank you for doing that. The bird that you see here is called an Appomatto Falcon, this is a very, very endangered bird, and the word Appomatto in Spanish means lead, once you turn it around, show them the back. You can see the coloration. Believe it or not, but this bird only weighs seven ounces. They used to be indigenous to Arizona, New Mexico, and Texas, now they're only found on the extreme southern end of Texas. So, it's unfortunate, but I hope that we don't lose this bird, it's just like the peregrine falcon, we almost lost that. And there's a breeding program going on right now to try to reintroduce this bird, but the thing about that, just like the California condor, if you bring them into captivity and increase their numbers, and you don't have any place to put them back, what have we really done, you know? So I hope that this bird, and if you look at this bird, and Patty's going to rocket back, it's just absolutely stunning, okay? And this is one of the birds that we bring in to the classroom, and a lot of people never see an Appomatto Falcon, because again, they're so endangered, but when the kids see the bird, because you can bring in slides, and pictures, and films, and all that wonderful stuff, and that's great educational, but you bring in the real thing, man, and you But you bring in the real thing, man, and you got them. I was in King Supers a couple of months ago. And, you know, I was doing my shopping and this young man goes... And he says, "You came to my school when I was in the sixth grade." I go, "So what else do you remember when you were in the sixth grade?" She says, "Nothing, but boy, I remember that bird flying in," you know? So, well, hopefully we're making an impact out there. So thank you again. I always love coming here and bringing the birds and so forth. Thank you.
How about another round of applause for Hawk Quest? Good job.
And I have the privilege of introducing the Denver Rocky Mountain Chapter of the American Guild of Organists. That's an acronym.
I'm Lynda Back. I'm the Sub Dean or the Program Chair of the local chapter. Now, "local" chapter in Colorado means that we pretty much have members all over the state, except for Colorado Springs and Fort Collins, that have their own chapters. But we're very grateful for Douglas County because we do have venues that are all over the Front Range. And Douglas County has helped us over the past several years be able to put on programs down here. We had a world-class organist, Felix Hella, a number of years ago. We have collaborated organ and the Denver Brass for a great Christmas program. And this year, we're focusing on kids and their families because we're going to do our Petals, Pipes, and Pizza in Douglas County. Now, the kids will be able to come in and hear an entertaining presentation about the history and how pipe organs work. And they'll actually get to help build a little pipe organ because we have that coming. And then, of course, they have pizza. And they always enjoy all of it. We also have a number of students from Douglas County. Every year, we have people that, high school students, that enter our scholarship program where we give a free scholarship of summer organ lessons for those students who are interested in actually studying seriously to see if they want to continue on with the pipe organ. So thank you so much, Douglas County, for supporting these programs that we have.
Thank you. And this one's near and dear to my heart in my district in Lone Tree, the Lone Tree Symphony Orchestra. Lone Tree here? You're doing double duty today. Give you two checks.
So, again, I'm Jacinda Bauton. I'm also the Music Director of the Lone Tree Symphony Orchestra and Founder of the Orchestra with a small group of people. We started in 2000, so this is our '26 season. And we perform at the Lone Tree Arts Center. It's such a great community there. And Douglas County comes out to support us so, so much. And we have other programs within our organization where we go out to the schools, provide coaching for string ensembles, that kind of thing, and provide small groups to perform at retirement communities. And we're beginning a composition competition, so, next year. So we're super excited about that with the help with SCFD to help us with that. So thanks for all your support, SCFD and the Commission, for the Lone Tree Symphony. We hope to see you at the Lone Tree Arts Center.
I have the Miedra Dance Studio. Miedra Dance Studio? Not here today.
Okay. Well, hang on to that one. Make sure it gets over to the dance studio unless somebody wants to come up and do a performance and take a check. We were going to try to avoid that. Okay, and my last one, and it might be the same person unless it's a separate Symphony Orchestra, but the Parker Symphony Orchestra. Welcome. Welcome.
There you go. You bet. Congratulations.
Thanks. I guess I have to say something. Well, I feel pressured. So my name's Renee Kenech. I want to start by thanking SCFD and Douglas County Commissioners, of course, for the, for the help. I'm the Music Director of the Parker Symphony Orchestra. Some of you may have been to one of our concerts. If not, if you don't recognize me, I'll help you out. This is, this is bad. So I'm the arm waver from the podium. The Parker Symphony, as a Parker Symphony, the name changed. The orchestra itself is in its 32nd season. But we were the first classical music event at the Pace Center in Parker right after it got built in 2011. I think it opened in October and in November, we gave our first concert there. So the orchestra is, at the moment, I think we stand at 76 members. It's a large orchestra. Not everyone plays every single concert because we're all volunteers with the exception of one player, and me. And so we are, this particular season, our entire season is composers who were born in the U.S. as our way of celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States. So hope to see some of you at one of our concerts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know we're running a little bit over. Even though it's three, we'd still like to have everybody come up. We're going to do... Oh, you have one more? Okay, good. Yes, okay, please.
And yes, I do know we're over, but it has been a competitive process and not everyone that applied got a check. But thrilled to have those that are here today. And the final one, friends of Dinosaur Ridge.
No. Why didn't you bring your dinosaur? Tough to beat. Yeah, that's true.
The falcon is a modern-day dinosaur. So, and we love Hawk Watch. I am so honored to be amongst all of you guys who enrich everybody's lives every day with what you do. And you do it as nonprofits and with a lot of volunteers. And, you know, you make our lives better. And I'm so grateful to Douglas County for supporting us, even though we're located in Jeffco. We support each other. This entire Front Range is, has such an incredible geological and paleontological natural history story to tell. Somebody mentioned dinosaur being found in, yeah, Highlands Ranch. You never know. When you start building a road or you start digging something up, you might run into some bones.
And you serve Douglas County. Maybe share with us how you serve those citizens here?
We do. Yeah, we get tons of school kids who come and do field trips all the time. And we have just people who want to come and visit and see the bones and the tracks that are still embedded in the stone on the hogback just down the way. So we're very grateful for your support and for the SCFD Cultural Council's support for our organization. And we look forward to continuing to work together through outreach in every way we can.
Well, thank you. We're grateful for you too. Another round of applause. Anything else, Commissioner? All right. I think, well, where would you like to have us, Drew? Okay. Do you want the SCFD banner? That's pretty cool. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Well, we do have a very exciting afternoon. The area of Louviers now has clean drinking water. After years of battling contamination with radium, we had a really significant project with Louviers around water wastewater. And we are drinking some clean drinking water, I believe, this afternoon. So we are going to try to get through our regular agenda as quickly as we can. Our next item is Item 4B, an ordinance to support law enforcement and crime prevention in Douglas County, Colorado.
Oh, no.
And that, I believe, we have pulled.
My agenda just has the...
So we'll move to our final item, which is an ordinance governing construction defect litigation in Douglas County, Colorado. Jeff Garcia presenting for staff. Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioner. Give me one second. I'm trying to... There we go. So Commissioners, today we're going to discuss what's on First Reading, an ordinance that will help define the use of building code and land use laws in Douglas County and provide for safe, habitable construction in the county. The intent of the ordinance is to clearly state the purpose of Douglas County's building code and land use, that those laws are meant to govern the construction of buildings and not create a separate civil right of action. To ensure safe, habitable construction, I apologize for getting over a cold, and swift resolution of deficiencies in construction. The goal is to let everyone understand that Douglas County is a community welcoming to responsible businesses and builders, provide for opportunities for young people to develop wealth and to save for the future through real estate, to right-size for those individuals who are aging out of their home and would prefer a opportunity to find the right-size home for them, and to create greater consumer confidence through safe and efficient resolution of real construction problems. The process has been looking at the best practices throughout the state. We saw input through stakeholders, and we are continuing this process. This is First Reading. We have shared the draft publicly and would encourage all those who have comments or thoughts about how to better reach these goals to reach out and provide those. By operation, again, states that the Douglas County Building Code is not meant to create a separate civil right of action, that where there are construction defects that create a safety concern that we're noticed of those, and that HOAs have information, sell-in form, and engage their homeowners in possible construction defects, as well as providing builders the responsibility to inspect and repair those real deficits. There are limitations. This is not taking away homeowners' rights to seek remedy for real problems with their, with their home or property that they've purchased. Rather, it's just moving that through a different set of criteria other than the Douglas County Building Code. It only applies to Douglas County, to unincorporated Douglas County. And again, this is only the First Reading. We will examine this again in about a month. This, the, the ordinance draft is available online. And we are welcoming both public and business comment on this.
Great. Thank you so much. Jeff, any questions for our county attorney?
Not for me.
Okay. I don't have any questions, but as a commercial land use attorney for most of my career, you know, many of us in a lot of different organizations have been working on construction defect for literally decades, hoping for some sort of solution so that really citizens can begin building those primary building blocks of wealth, which is being able to buy as opposed to rent property. And sometimes it starts with a one-bedroom, one-bath, and building some equity and being able to move up from there. But it's very difficult for a younger generation and then aging seniors who are trying to get into smaller locations to be able to purchase places that fit their lifestyle. We also think, you know, in terms of workforce housing, having folks that can live where they work instead of commuting from Aurora and Lakewood and Thornton and other areas that may be slightly more affordable than Douglas County, that's also a traffic solution. Means that our roads aren't going to be clogged up with people commuting in the morning when they can live and work right here in Douglas County. And specifically, you know, teachers and first responders, members of law enforcement, those that serve this community every day should be able to afford to live here. And so this is a big deal. We know that Sodara and construction defect have been massive impediments to the ability for business owners to build condominiums anywhere in Colorado. So we think this is a good first step. In Douglas County, we often don't wait to do great. So not necessarily waiting on the state at all for the remedy, even though we have been at the table and hoping for that for many years. Certainly, my friend and colleague has been right there with the front row seat as a representative and a senator. Is the state making any progress on that, Kevin?
There's always the promise.
Yeah, we always...
It was 2015.
Fingers crossed.
I heard that promise.
We've had our fingers crossed for about 20 years. But, you know, really pleased to see this come forward. And in high compliments to our county attorney, who really has the sharp legal mind and the innovative skills to think of ways we can best serve our citizens here locally. So thank you for that. I do want to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item? Either in person or online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion. And again, I just remind the listening public that this is First Reading. You will have another opportunity to comment on this item at Second Reading.
Yeah, so no rush to the microphone today, but as we often do, especially with a big policy, is put it out there and then let several weeks or if not months go by and let the public comment, respond, reach out to us individually or as a board. And that is exactly what we're doing here. So First Reading, it will be a couple of weeks before we adopt the final policy after we're able to hear from all of our constituents. And really what this is, is an effort to free people, at least in part, from one of the most irrational and harmful housing policies, really, in the nation. As Abe kind of laid out, or Commissioner Layden laid out, in large part, there, that whole middle income, or that whole middle market of the condo market, which is so popular, really, I mean, just within miles of my house, Tressana people love, by the Town Center in Highlands Ranch people love, Palmeo Park people love. And they love living in those condo markets. It's really, like you said, for that first-time homebuyer, it's that first chance to really own something as opposed to just pay endless rent that you will never see come back. And for the elderly family that maybe their kids have moved out of their house and they don't want to take care of a 3,000-square-foot house, or they don't want to take care of a big yard anymore and want to move into something a bit more modest. That market has just been completely decimated and it's caused rippling effects throughout. And in fact, I think, kind of locked up almost an entire generation in paying very high rent to renters as opposed to being on established debt mortgage. So we here recognize that. We also recognize that we, at the local level, govern land use zoning and other things that pertain directly to this. And so we're trying to, trying to make a difference and trying to, like I said, free people, at least in part, from the most irrational and harmful housing policy that I can imagine. And it's just been tied up at the state level for a while. And local governments, such as Denver and others, have found inventive ways where they can at least help their citizens out. So that's what we're trying to do here. And I look forward to the public comment in the meantime, between now and Second Reading. And thank you to our attorney, Jeff Garcia, for you and your whole team for diligent work on this very rather complex, but also, in a sense, simple issue.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for that. So with that, we've had some comment. I'll bring you back to the board for any further discussion or a motion to move this on to Second Reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we are well behind schedule. So I move to approve an ordinance governing construction defects litigation in Douglas County, Colorado.
So in Commissioner Teal's absence, I will second that motion and ask for any discussion. Sign on. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously 2-0. I will ask if there is any additional citizen comment or input to please contact us directly at 303-660-7400 or at douglas.co.us. I will ask for any additional Commissioner comments at this time.
No, I know we're well behind schedule and appreciate everyone who joins us today. and look forward to the next meeting.
Is there any other business? Okay. The county manager has provided a very detailed county manager report for all things happening in the county. Anything from the county manager? Okay, so with that, the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. We'll give it a few minutes to reset and reconvene with our land use meeting shortly. We are adjourned.